Good evening and welcome to the April 29, 2021, meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. And I apologize on behalf of the board for our tardiness this evening. There were quite a few glitches. And we've since taken care of them. And I thank you for your patience. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices and mute your microphones to avoid any technical interference with the meeting. Also, we will be using Zoom's Spanish interpretation services this evening. If Mr. Lopez would please make an announcement that Spanish interpretation is available for the meeting by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. For those who are not able to observe now, this meeting is being recorded and information will be on our board webpage. Ms. Ellis, roll call, please.
Ms. Adam Shepard.
President.
Mrs. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strether.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris. Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Montero.
Here.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray. Mrs. Quin.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Present. We have a quorum. Board member Adam Stafford, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Yes. May please bow your heads or close your eyes. Thank you. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. And now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move to the adoption of the agenda for April 29, 2021 board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was wondering if we can give Mr. Lopez another shot at the translation of our... Yeah.
Mr. Lopez?
It was well...
I'm here, but I'm assigned as an interpreter. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. All right, give me one second. Okay. Bienvenidos a la reunión de la Junta Educativa de las Escuelas Públicas del Condado de Prince George. Les deseamos avisar que esta reunión será interpretada en vivo al español. Si usted desea escuchar la reunión en español, solamente debe presionar la imagen del globo del planeta que se encuentra en la parte baja de su pantalla de Zoom. Luego seleccione el idioma español. Si está utilizando su teléfono móvil, puede pulsar el elipse y luego seleccionar interpretación en español. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Now we'll go back to the adoption of the agenda. The April 29, 2021 board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Now we will move on to the approval of board meeting minutes for April 15, 2021. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the board meeting minutes for April 15, 2021. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries the board meeting minutes for April 15, 2021 have been approved. Okay, now to the report of the chair. At this moment, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. Colleagues, at this time, I ask that you all join me in honoring the memory of staff members and family members of our staff with a moment of silence. Donna Windsor, paraprofessional educator at Frederick Douglass High School. Stephanie Hammond, teacher, Largo High School. Pauline Good, teacher, Bond Mill Elementary School. Ruda Doster, human resources specialist retired. She served thirty years, thirty-plus years with the Prince George's County Public School System. Joseph Jones, father of Rochelle Jones, paraprofessional educator, Potomac High School. Annie Tillery Moore, paraprofessional educator. Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School. Ms. Ollie White, food services assistant, Riverdale Elementary School. Please continue to keep these families in your thoughts and prayers. Next, you should be aware that our next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 12, at 7:00 PM. Due to the holiday falling on May 13th, the board will be meeting on May 12th. And we will only have one meeting during the month of March, the month of May. And it will be posted on our board docs, information. Please continue to check our webpage for information about upcoming board meetings as well as Zoom meeting login information. To our constituents, stakeholders, students, parents in our listening audience. It is the responsibility of the board to extend to you information that is the result of a complaint that was filed against the board against the board for an Open Meetings Act violation. And I will give you a summary of what that violation is. As the chair of the board, I have to provide this public, this information to the public on behalf of the board. The following information is to inform the public of an April 20, 21 opinion issued by the State of Maryland Open Meetings Compliance Board involving the December 16, 2020 Emergency Closed Session Meeting of the Board Office Reorganization Committee. The Open Meetings Compliance Board found that the board failed to provide reasonable advanced notice to the public of the December 16, 2020 meeting because the notice of the meeting was not posted and made available to the public until approximately twenty minutes before the meeting was scheduled to convene. The Compliance Board concluded that the board violated Section 3-301A of the Open Meetings Act, which requires a public body to provide reasonable advanced notice to the public before meeting in closed or open session. The Open Meetings Compliance Board also found that portions of the board committee's discussions during the December 16, 2020 meeting violated the Open Meetings Act. The committee's discussion and consideration of the elimination of positions in the board office did not fall within the personnel exception for items permissible for discussion during a closed session meeting. The discussion did not focus on specific individuals or performance and attributes of specific employees. The Compliance Board concluded that the committee's discussion involving the elimination of positions should have occurred during an open session meeting and that this discussion during a closed session meeting violated Section 3-301 of the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Compliance Board also found that the board committee's discussion on the process for informing board office staff of the board office reorganization was an improper topic for discussion for a closed session meeting and should it have occurred in public. I'm hearing some feedback. Would you all please put your, your mics on mute? Thank you. I'd like to read that, that statement again. The Open Meetings Compliance Board also found that the board committee's discussion on the process for informing board office staff of the board office reorganization was an improper topic for discussion for a closed session meeting. And should it have, should not have occurred or should have occurred in public. The Compliance Board commented that deliberations concerning departmental consolidations and similar actions involve policy matters despite the fact that the decisions may almost always impact individual employees. Accordingly, this discussion also violated Section 3-301 of the Open Meetings Act. The board has reviewed the Compliance Board's opinion and will ensure in the future that it complies with the Open Meetings Act requirements applicable to its closed session and public meetings. Thank you for your attention.
Madam Chair, may I have a point of personal privilege to comment on the Open Meetings Compliance Board opinion, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that as board counsel, obviously, one of my roles is to advise the board on compliance issues around the Open Meetings Act. In this instance, it was my opinion that the board's discussion on elimination of positions in the board's office would be a permissible exception under the personnel exception to the act. The Open Meetings Compliance Board has now obviously issued a different opinion and finding on that issue. And I want to thank the Compliance Board for providing the corrective guidance. So I just wanted to put that acknowledgement out there for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Now we will move on to the report of the chief executive officer, Dr. Golson. Welcome.
Thank you.
For your report.
Thank you. Good evening. Coming on the heels of Earth Day, this week, we congratulated Potomac High School, William Packer Elementary School, and Margaret Brent Regional School on becoming newly certified Maryland green schools. Another 23 schools were recertified, bringing the total number of Prince George's County Public School green schools to 141, roughly 70% of all schools system-wide. We are Prince George's County Public School proud to continue leading the state in green school certifications. We were also pleased to learn this week that seven schools are on the 2021 U.S. News and World Report list of best high schools, ranking in the national top 40%. Congratulations to the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College, Bowie High School, CMIT High School, College Park Academy, Eleanor Roosevelt High School, International High School at Langley Park, and Oxon Hill High School. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Prince George's County Public Schools will host a mental health series, Wellness Inside and Out, Wednesday, May 5 through Saturday, May 8, open to all students, families, and employees. For more information, please visit the Prince George's County Public Schools website. Next week, we will have even more reason to be Prince George's County Public School proud as we kick off Teacher Appreciation Week, break ground on two new schools, and celebrate College and Career Signing Day. We hope that our community will join us in these celebrations and commemorations. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Now we will move into public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. And I will begin with the list of speakers is posted to board docs for the community's reference. And speakers will be called in that order. For those who have registered, when you hear your name called, you may begin your testimony, and you will have three minutes to present your remarks. The board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to provide comments. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individual or issue individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be terminated. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names. For example, principal, CEO, board member, deputy superintendent, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our first registered speaker for tonight is Teresa Dudley, Prince George's County Educators Association, and her topic is on the budget.
Thank you. It's on the budget. It's on the American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan enacted on March 11th will deliver 122 billion in aid to states and school districts to help safely and sustainably reopen schools and bridge the learning gap stemming from the pandemic. The total allocation for Maryland schools is $1.9 billion. That's billion with a B. Two-thirds of this money was to be received in March, and the remaining one-third will be received when the state submits a plan that complies with the federal requirements. Many states are in the process of drafting plans which mandate stakeholders' input, including educators, their unions, civil rights organizations, students, and families. It is important that the whole community is engaged. This document is intended to help, excuse me. Ninety percent of ARP funds must be distributed to local education agencies within sixty days of receipt. So the money will be coming quickly from the state as soon as we receive it. We've had four, there'll be four different waves of money. We've met with Dr. Golson and her team to discuss some of the impacts of the American Rescue Plan. And we are excited that about the collaboration on summer school and looking forward to it. And what we're concerned about, we want to make sure that we do equitably, is that one of the pieces to the plan is that the school system must actively work to entice teachers to work in the summer school program. While increased compensation is necessary, working conditions should be addressed, which should include smaller class sizes, the opportunity to work half-days, or to teach just one subject consistently, as well as the opportunity to be creative as opposed to implementing a stock curriculum. So we are excited about working with summer school. We've met with Mr. Burnett and his group, and we're trying to solidify it so that we can get summer school ready because our educators are willing and ready to work for summer school. On, I do want to say tonight that I am very concerned about a letter that I received this week concerning the abolishment of the Memorandum of Understanding on the Peer Assistance and Review Program. We worked really hard to get peer assistance and review in Prince George's County, and it is a state mandated function that all mentoring programs in local affiliate, local LEAs have a peer mentoring and peer assistance and review program. It is very important. It's like a residency for teachers. And we want to make sure that we continue this type of work. I do understand that there are going to be some changes in the mentoring program in Prince George's County Public Schools. We look forward to working collaboratively with the administration to address this issue. And I look forward to continually working with Dr. Christie Murphy and her team to make sure that we do whatever we can do to make sure that we stay in compliance with the blueprint law that there must be some sort of a peer assistance and review program. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate this time that you have given me tonight. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Jana Parker on school uniforms.
Good evening. I apologize if that was put in there. I'm not going to be speaking on school uniforms. I will be speaking on the English Language Learners Focus Group and accepting the recommendations from that particular focus group. So the focus group was actually formed to address the growing needs of our growing ELL population. And for several months, this focus group reviewed national data in regards to the best practices for English language learner students as well as receiving and reviewing reports and data from PGCPS officials and staff. The recommendations that are brought forth were thoughtfully and purposefully created and drafted after months-long, deep discussions and data dives amongst the work group based on the data presented by PGCPS as well as best practices looked at throughout the United States. I'm just urging that the board as a whole, go ahead and accept those recommendations without any sort of changes or amendments to them. This was based on the information that we were provided from the school system. And I want to also publicly thank Dr. Golson's staff, who did an amazing job in providing the work group with as much data and information and answers and questions and being available and just being wonderful in regards to this particular issue that is extremely important. We know that Prince George's County has a huge immigrant population and a huge population in the English language learners. And we want to make sure that our school system continues to give the right what it needs in regards to the services educationally. So I just wanted to encourage that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Michelle Clark, healthy and safety in buildings. Health and safety in buildings. Ms. Clark?
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Clark, and I'm speaking as an individual tonight. First off, I want to thank you. We finally got our industrial strength units for air filtration in our building on Monday, which was very nice. However... And this happens every year. That was actually my source of air conditioning today because it was so hot in our building. At least it was blowing air and it kept me cool. But there are other buildings I know that have not received these things yet, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know things are filtering in as you can get a hold of them. But please be mindful that there's still a number of employees out there who are very concerned about their health and safety. And when we find out that some of the things that we are told were in place aren't necessarily completely in place yet, it makes people very uncomfortable. Personally, as a teacher, I'm glad to have my students back. I love working with them and being with them in person is my purpose. So don't, don't think that I'm disagreeing with you. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page and feeling as healthy and as safe as I am being fully vaccinated. I also had the opportunity to read the ELL Task Force memorandum while I was waiting for this meeting to begin, and I would like to echo what Ms. Jana Parker said. And really, I hope that this board will accept many of those recommendations. I've worked for years. My mother actually writes in the area of multicultural education and has published several college textbooks. So I'm very familiar with multicultural education and bilingual education. I've taken many of those CPD classes. And I know that for children, that first beginning step when they come in, when they're first learning the language, is the most difficult time. And getting them to that academic language is, it just doesn't come naturally unless you really offer. And I hope bilingual education is the way we can go. I've had parents come in from Montgomery County who said that's what they got there, and it worked extremely well. I hope it can work as well here if we can get to that point. I like the fact that they left it open for online options before we get to in-person options if the school systems numbers are, the school's numbers are not high enough for in-person offerings. And just as President Dudley said, I know we've got a lot of money coming in with the American Recovery Act. Please don't kill your teachers with extra paperwork to qualify our students along the way to get these extra services that they're entitled to. Being in a special ed center, I can tell you, people are pulling their hair out afraid that they're going to have twenty extra meetings between now and June. So I got a lot in in a short period of time. Thank you all very much. It's always a pleasure seeing you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next will be Ms. Tanya Vida Wingfield, individual, general comments.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good evening, board members and CEO. First, I just want to start off by commending those board members who have been attending the MAB training and posting that to the public so that we know what you're doing. Please, I'm asking that you take some time to digest that information, read your board policies and your bylaws so you can see how you can apply that information that you're learning so that you will legally do your duties. Now, a couple of things I do want to mention that you have done that are in violation, so you learn from those lessons. One, the meeting that you held on April 28, where you had seven board members who met so that you can go into executive session. And you were advised by counsel that that could be challenged, and it can because the action that you were taking was a vote to go into executive session. And as you have done in the past, you have set precedence where the student member was allowed to vote. So therefore, you needed eight people there, so that meeting should not have taken place. So that was a meeting in violation of your bylaws. Also, item 5.2 that you have on the consent agenda, that needs to be removed. Remember, the consent agenda is reserved for the CEO, not committee chairs and other people of the board to discuss things and then pop it on the consent agenda so that you can approve what you thought about. It has to be vetted with the public. And also, the meeting for March 22, where this action took place, was never posted for the public so that we would know about it. So that meeting on March 22 by the committee that was held in violation of the Opens Meeting Act. So, but again, I commend you that who have been going to your training, keep it up. But just start looking at your policies so that you apply things correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. Next will be Sarah Kristofferson, Thomas Stone Elementary PTO.
Yes, hello. My name is Sarah Kristofferson. I am the parent of a current Hightsville Middle School sixth grader who will be a seventh grader this fall. By the time my son, apologies, by the time my son moves on to high school, he will have spent all three of his middle school years in the upheaval of the pandemic and the swing space move. I am thrilled that our middle school is getting a desperately needed new building, but my son and his classmates will never step foot in the shiny new building. And this is a cohort where seven in ten of his classmates qualify for free and reduced meals. So their well-being, excuse me, ought to have been a top priority. This winter, PGCPS staff proposed a plan that would have moved the Montessori program into a campus that is the right size for its student body and would have kept all of our middle school together at the Goddard Campus, a facility that's the right size for ours. I will never know exactly what happened. What I do know is that members of this board and of our broader political community, including those who claim to be focused on vulnerable children, openly gloated about helping the more privileged and politically connected parents at the Montessori magnet program while ensuring that the more vulnerable kids at multiple Title I schools bear the brunt of the consequences. Now we're working to ensure that the fallback plan works as well as it can. And I want to be clear, I strongly support the plan that the CEO has begun to implement that would ensure, ensure that our seventh and eighth graders, including my son, are together at the Goddard Campus no later than January 1st and that the sixth graders are settled at Thomas Stone. I am also the parent of a current Thomas Stone Elementary third grader and a past president and current member of the Thomas Stone PTO board. Thomas Stone is a school where nine out of every 10 kids qualifies for farms and where a majority of our parents speak English as their second language or not at all. During my time as a parent leader, I have known Dr. Goldson and her staff to be capable leaders who care about Thomas Stone and understand the challenges of a school population like ours. And PGCPS knows that Thomas Stone parents aren't going to send a nasty letter about sharing with Hyattsville kids. We love Hyattsville kids. And we're going to make sure they feel welcomed every day they spend on Thomas Stone campus. But sharing space across two or more campuses won't be without challenges. And splitting up our middle school to appease the Montessori parents won't be without challenges. This is the second best plan, but it's what I'm committed to making succeed. What I hope from all of you is that as we navigate these challenges, I urge this board to support the CEO in making decisions in the best interests of all three schools, not just the privileged school. And candidly, I ask the members of this board to stay out of operational decisions without at least understanding that you're going to hurt Title I kids like ours. Thank you for your time.
And I forgot to give all Ms. Kristofferson's credentials. She's also the PTO Treasurer at Thomas Stone. She's a Hyattsville Middle School Liaison, and she's the Hyattsville Middle School Swing Space Representative. Just want to give you your credits. Okay, next is Timothy Meyer, Mount Rainier Elementary PTO, Hyattsville Middle School Swing Space. Your mic is not on.
Sorry. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you again regarding the ongoing Hyattsville Middle School Swing Space issue. Since the last BOE meeting, we had the chance to meet with the CEO, hear her explanation and reasoning for the situation, and all agreed to work together moving forward. We didn't get every single thing that we asked for, but we have a plan that we can work with. To the board, you've got a really good one in Dr. Goldson, and I want everyone to know that the parents support her. There's one issue I want to highlight, though. From the start, too many politicians tried to inject themselves into what should have been an entirely operational decision. Some made phone calls or appeared at rallies. Some politicians bragged about their role. One mayor took a victory lap on Facebook, tagging other elected officials. This was never going to be an easy process, but all that meddling only made Dr. Goldson's job even harder. And in the end, no one won. Not Robert Goddard, who got used as a proxy for other agendas and battles. Not Hyattsville Middle, who faces a three-way split, especially not the kids. Let's get straight to the real problem here. Far too many local elected officials jumped right to the Robert Goddard side, never even reaching out to Hyattsville Middle School. That was the instinct and default. Rally to the more privileged magnet school, the one that draws families away from neighborhood schools like ours. But it wasn't just politics, it was bad politics. Think for a second. How many Title I families versus magnet school families are in each of your districts? My five-year-old could do that math. Some outside groups use words like progressive to claim to fight for kids like ours, but back those who sided with the privileged magnet schools instead. Maybe selling out Maryland would be more accurate. Parents see all these games. We know who tried to take our kids and use them as pawns to undermine Dr. Goldson or the P3 process or create some leverage up in Annapolis. We see it all, and it's disgusting. But there are more. So thank you to Dr. Goldson, or thanks to Dr. Goldson, our situation is getting resolved. But there will be more fights like this and more swing space issues in the years ahead. Let me be very, very clear. Our kids are not some bragging rights story or bargaining chip for the cloakrooms of Annapolis or stepping stones to the next political office. Next time, please keep the politics out and let Dr. Goldson do the job that we need her to do. And thank you, Dr. Goldson, for everything that you've done already.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Next, we will have Katerina Coria, Member of a Coalition of Parent Leaders at Five Schools, Hyattsville Middle School Swing Space.
Thank you, and I'm here representing just myself. My name is Katerina Coria, and I am the mother of a seventh-grade student at Hyattsville Middle School, and I'm also the PTSO President. Dr. Goldson and her team have come up with a plan for HMS for the next two years that will eventually have all of our seventh and eighth graders in the same location with Robert Goddard and our sixth graders at nearby Thomas Stone. Unfortunately, it cannot be fully implemented until a new 10-classroom structure is added to RGMS. This means that HMS will be starting off the next school year in three separate locations, Bowie, Greenbelt, and Mount Rainier. Our principal, Ms. Stamper, and her staff face the monumental challenge of trying to coordinate and schedule for a school that will be divided in three. She, as well as the students and staff, will need all the support they can get, and I sincerely hope that this board will work together to provide them with it. Some of the immediate needs include extra buses, not only to get the children to the different locations, but to ensure that those that are in Bowie have their own bus route and will not be subjected to the 68-minute commute each way that we were told to expect. We will need buses to transport our students from all three locations to and from after-school activities like sports practices and performance rehearsals. Considering the bus issues we have had in the past, this will be a difficult task, and I ask that every effort please be made to ensure these buses will be available to us in the fall. We will need extra teachers and staff. All three locations should have not only an administrator, but also support staff in place. On top of that, more elected teachers will need to be hired so that all three locations have access to language classes, as well as creative and performing arts classes, such as music, drama, dance, choir, art, creative writing, and media studies. Dr. Goldson and her team have committed to providing us with these. We greatly appreciate that and hope that this board will help them keep their commitments. Lastly, I wanted to thank this entire board, as well as Dr. Goldson and her team, for addressing the backlog of PG County schools that are in dire need of repair. Our students deserve facilities that are conducive to learning and growth. I'm so happy that Hyattsville will finally have a middle school that will meet that criteria. And while my son will not benefit from it, our friends and neighbors' kids will, and that's what's important. As the PG County Board of Education, you have been entrusted with the care and needs of all of our students and are meant to ensure that the students the furthest behind have the greatest opportunities to grow without unnecessary challenges. I trust that you will remember this as you move forward with helping HMS students and others navigate this transition process and as you continue to work towards a stronger and more equitable PGCPS. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Patrick Pascal, Hyattsville Elementary PTA, Hyattsville Elementary School.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Pashal. I have two kids at Hyattsville Elementary, and I am speaking on behalf of the Hyattsville Elementary School PTA this evening. First, I just want to talk about the FY22 Education Facilities Master Plan. We were surprised to see that there was only one speaker at last night's public hearing. So I wanted to, and especially since half of the board wasn't there, I wanted to just reemphasize a couple of important points from that. First off, we're pleased to see that the current plan includes those schools who were originally identified as having the greatest need. You'll recall that the original plan called for Hyattsville Elementary to be fourth on the list for replacement, and that plan called for starting in FY17 with a completion this year, 2021. So, you know, that process still hasn't begun, and I cannot emphasize enough how urgent and important it is to keep Hyattsville Elementary second in line for replacement following Cherokee Lane. I also want to say that through the P3 program, which thankfully accelerated the school construction process, we've learned a lot of lessons in Hyattsville. And, you know, as Hyattsville Middle is on the first round for P3 schools, the limited site availability for the swing space, I mean, as others have mentioned, has our kids going to three different schools? One of them's going to take an hour to get to each way. This is outrageous. I mean, this is outrageous. And so I don't want to get into blame or frustration over how we got where we are. What we want to do is offer to other schools the advice that we have learned, you know, from this experience. So aside from the logistics and the economics, of course, this is going to have a negative impact on our students. It's going to have a negative impact on staff retention. And the key here that you need to focus on is that a swing space plan is absolutely necessary for all future EFMP plans, even if it's just a work in progress. These plans need to begin now, right now, this right now, in order for us to not have, you know, especially in the overcrowded parts of the northern part of the county, the urban areas, to not have these kinds of problems perpetuated in the future as we have more and more and more schools that need to have construction issues. So in Hyattsville and surrounding areas, which are largely made up of Title I schools, you know, we've been suffering from the lack of space planning, swing space planning specifically, and we can avoid this if you just put it into the plans right now. Cycle one and cycle two schools, to those of you who are listening, the Hyattsville Elementary PTA, we are happy and excited to help you so that you don't have to endure this pain as you go through the process. If you want to get in touch with us, email us at hyattvillees@gmail.com. The silver lining here is that we have a strong coalition of parents from five schools who are committed and who stand ready to assist the Board of Education in planning the future construction progress project so that other communities and ours don't experience the kind of mistakes in planning that we experienced in the Hyattsville Middle School replacement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers for tonight. We also have a community member who provided a pre-recorded video testimony that has been posted on Board Docs. Justice Termon, 12th grade student at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. And teacher, student relationships, and mental health is the topic. Please review this testimony at your convenience. English Language Learners Focus Group Report. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of the English Language Learners Focus Work Group Report. Board Members Jackson and Ahmed are the co-chairs of this focus work group. Would you like to present the report at this time?
Yes, Dr. Miller, thank you so much. I will start off by giving some context and then pass it over to Board Member Jackson. Colleagues, it's with great excitement that I co-present this focus work group report to you alongside Board Member Jackson. As a reminder, the focus work group, the English Language Learners Focus Work Group, was created by our board on November 12, 2020 to meet and develop recommendations to the Board of Education and Administration regarding English language learners and PGCPS. The work group consisted of members, myself as co-chair, Nina Jackson as co-chair, Marissa Solano, Jana Parker, Sama Basmacchi, and students Sandra Mualdo and Jessica Garcia Bacaletti. The work group met virtually on a regular basis between January and April of this year to discuss local and national best practices for decreasing the achievement gap of immigrant students in order to provide recommendations to the full board for adoption and implementation. On April 14, 2021, the work group voted unanimously to send its final recommendations to the Board of Education for approval at this meeting. The work group will also request assistance from PGCPS Communications to format the final recommendations, once it's approved by the board, into a presentable report that can be shared publicly with members of the community. I also wanted to remind folks, I had listed and kind of spoke about the charges of the work group, but we also had a number of goals. And those goals that we fulfilled were identifying ways to build the pipeline for English language learners in all PGCPS academic programs, identifying ways to recruit immigrant staff and faculty members, including visa sponsorship, and building a pipeline of leadership for them in Prince George's County Public Schools, identifying needs and translation services and school-based bilingual support staff for immigrant families, developing recommendations for the professional development of teachers and staff members for working with English language learners, providing recommendations on delivering native language instruction to English language learners in core subjects as a means to bridge the achievement gap, and lastly, exploring establishing ethnic studies in the PGCPS curriculum. And so you'll see in the report, our recommendations are bucketed into four different categories. The first category is human resources. The second is academic achievement. The third is curriculum and instruction, and the fourth is translation and family support. We examined a wide variety of data. Thank you to Administration for providing the data from PGCPS aside and for Mr. Mercedes from board staff in doing the local and national research. That data is available on Board Docs under the focus work group meetings, and it's also in the report in the appendix section. And also, I do want to note that since the report was provided to you all, we've received a number of pieces of feedback from Administration and also from fellow board members. I want to note that Ms. Jackson and I have both thoroughly looked through those feedback points, every single one. We went point by point. And we'll be discussing the feedback with the focus work group at a meeting next week on May 5, after which we intend to bring this back to the full board for approval as a second reader on May 12 by consensus of the board today. And so that is kind of where we're at right now. I'll pass it over to Ms. Jackson for any other comments.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. I don't know if there's much left for me to work with after your very extensive rundown. But I just want to echo some sentiments that were already expressed. At the top, I just want to thank Administration for their involvement in this process. Over the course of my term, I've learned that they all have very hefty workloads. And so I know that showing up to our meetings, fulfilling our data requests and follow items wasn't easy work. And so you all have just my wholehearted gratitude for your efforts with this process. And then secondly, I just wanted to iterate that this focus work group and the recommendations that came as a result isn't meant to be the end-all-be-all of our board's commitment to and interest in the academic achievement of immigrant students. We know that. But this is just meant to further the conversation about how we as a board can assist communally in ensuring that our immigrant students and their families continue to find academic and personal success. Ms. Ahmed has already said it, but I also want to extend gratitude to Dr. Goldson, the Board Vice Chair, Ms. Williams, and Board Member Boozer Struther for providing very extensive feedback and questions and comments about where there's room for improvement. And so Ms. Ahmed has already said, we will be reviewing that feedback multiple times over, and we will be taking it back to our focus work group to see how we could further bolster our recommendation in our report. And so those were my remarks.
Thank you, Board Members Ahmed and Jackson. Very comprehensive report. Again, thank you. I'd like to move to the consent agenda. We will consider items 5.2 separately. Dr. Goldson, please introduce 5.1.
Yes. Excuse me, Dr. Miller?
Question?
Yes, we have a hand up. Miss Board Member Curtis Valentine has his hand up.
Board Member Valentine?
Is this appropriate time? I don't know whether we have a discussion on this or not, or whether I should just advise those persons to the work group? I wasn't sure.
My understanding is that you would provide them to the work group. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was just for discussion only? Board Member Ahmed, you want to address that?
Yes, Mr. Valentine, your feedback is very much welcome. Our focus work group is meeting on May 5 next week, and that has been posted online already. So if you have any comments, feel free to send it over our way. I also did want to clarify, I believe I mentioned this before, but I did want to clarify that by consensus of this board, we can bring back the work group with the revisions as appropriate by the focus work group members on May 12 as a second reader. Now, we can make that a matter of the minutes if it's the consensus of the board, if no one has any objections.
And can you, someone on the board staff, ensure I get a link to the next work group meeting? I just had a few questions to contributions.
Point of clarification, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
This item is under the discussion agenda. So it's not being considered as a first reader. It's just for discussion.
So then it will come on the May agenda as a first reader? Am I correct? Is that correct?
I believe that the focus work group items are supposed to go through the committees that it may impact before it comes to the board for approval. That is what I believe the intent of the focus work group was.
Point of clarification, there's no requirement for focus work group reports to go through committees. And so either, because it's been posted at this meeting, this could be considered. The point of the first reader is so that members of the public can have access to the meeting report. And so we could go straight to the second reader for May 12. But if it's the board to go to first reader, then that is okay, too.
According to the policy, the final report is being brought for a guest discussion, not for action.
Okay, and then I guess in that case, I can put a motion on the floor to have a vote to allow the focus work. Or we can keep it as discussion and allow for the focus work group to bring it back once we vote upon it as a final item and bring it back to the board again. Or we can put a vote on the floor now. It's up to the board.
We will put this item on first reader for the debate. We will, we will put this item on first reader for the May 12th agenda. You just agreed to that.
Thank you.
We don't need to deliberate on that any further. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, Board Member Queen, your hand is up. And your mic.
Thank you. I was trying to get to the unmute. Thank you so very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to commend the work group on the awesome job they had, did. And I also want to suggest to each of my colleagues, if you haven't had a chance to do that, to listen to the, um, testimony that we had, didn't get, that it was part of record, as, um, Madam Chair said, that was sent in from one of our students. And it brought me back to what this focus work group is doing, which is an awesome job, because we got to realize that we do have diverse students and a lot that is going on. And if you listen to the testimony, you would know the work that the board still have to do, and especially when it comes to the social emotional well-being of all students, even the English line, language learner of all of our workers, even our staff and our teachers. So it's so important that we realize that we as the Board of Education have to make sure that we are making decisions for all students. So again, I just want to thank you guys for the great work you're doing.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Jackson?
Yep, I was just gonna say that, um, it's already been said that feedback and comments are welcome, even to attend a meeting of the focus work group, and I urge you all to please do so. Um, y'all had standing invitations to our previous meetings. Um, some of you have my contact information. Some of you have Ms. Ahmed's. You all have our emails, and so please, 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 this is a group effort. Um, your feedback and your comments are welcomed.
Thank you. Any more comments? Back to Dr. Golson. Please introduce 5.1.
Thank you. Item 5.1 requires board approval of a proclamation commemorating children's mental health awareness.
And the dates, May 2nd through the 8th, 2021.
Thank you. So moved.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept that proclamation.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions? The motion carries, um, the motion carries. Next, we will move for the approval of public comment on policy 5151, student journalists and school sponsor media and policy, uh, media and policy, 5143 bullying, harassment, or intimidation. Item 5.2 has been forwarded by the Policy and Governance Committee. Board Member Ahmed, as the Chair of the Committee, do you want to make brief remarks and move this item on behalf of the committee?
Yes, Dr. Miller, thank you. Colleagues, the Policy and Governance Committee met virtually on March 22nd, 2021, with the following members in attendance, myself as Committee Chair, Joshua Thomas as Committee Vice Chair, Pamela Boozer Struther, Edward Burrows, and Nina Jackson. The committee discussed the creation of policy 5151 and revisions to policy 5143. The purpose of policy 5151, student journalists and school sponsors, school-sponsored media, is to recognize the freedom of speech and freedom of press rights of student journalists and school-sponsored publications, and to ensure that sponsored publications and productions, which provide a vehicle for student expression, are consistent with legal and regulatory requirements, school system policies and procedures, civil discourse, responsible journalism, and professional standards. The purpose of policy 5143, bullying, harassment, or intimidation, is to create safe and productive learning environments in our schools by prohibiting bullying, harassment, or intimidation of any person on school property or at school-sponsored functions, or by use of electronic technology in Prince George County Public Schools. The committee discussed the purpose and utility of these policies. Subsequently, the committee voted unanimously to forward both policies to the full board with the recommendation that the policies be sent out for public comment. If advanced by the board, these policies will be posted on the PGCPs webpage and publicized by the school district for community input for a period no shorter than two weeks. After public comments are received, the committee will consider the public comments and recommend any further revisions before making a recommendation to the board to approve the final versions of these policies. Uh, Madam Chair, I move on behalf of the Policy and Governance Committee that we, uh, publish these, uh, two policies for public comment.
Okay, it has been moved on behalf of the committee, so no second is needed. Is there any discussion? Board Member Queen?
Board Member Ahmed, um, my question is, is this for everybody, including staff, not just the students? Um, I just wanted to clarify that because I've heard a lot of staff been bullied and harassed. So that policy said anybody on school grounds, and I mean, I may, you know, even receive comments and emails from staff. So I just want to make sure it's covering everybody.
Yes, that's a good question, Ms. Queen. I believe it does. Um, but I can double check and make sure that I provide you the most accurate information. If there's other members of the committee that can provide a clear, direct answer, then I will yield.
And because that statement said any, oh, could, oh, right, oh, and all these everyone. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you so very much.
Okay, it has been moved and.
Uh, excuse me, Dr. Miller?
I apologize. This, uh, Boozer Struther?
Uh, th- thank you. In response to Ms. Ahmed, we also passed the policy that is specific to employees on bullying. Um, so we may, you know, there'd be a good opportunity to look at them side by side and understand the similarities and differences.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll move now to, uh, 6.0 Budget Consent Agenda. Dr. Golson, please introduce item 6.1 through 6.5.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 6.1 through 6.5 requires board approval of final payment and acceptance for work at Langley Park McCormick Elementary School, Holcris Heights Elementary School, Lewis Dale Elementary School, Patuxent Elementary School, and Thomas Stone Elementary School, and a change order for work at Stephen B. Cader Middle.
Did you mention Thomas Stone, 6.5?
I did, Madam Chair. Thank you for checking.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.5 on the budget consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, a question to Dr. Golson, particularly as it relates to the change order. That's something that we asked them to do, or is that based on their, uh, their budgeting?
I have Dr. Fossett joining us for the first time as the Chief of Operations. So I will yield the floor to him to respond. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Fossett.
Dr. Fossett.
Uh, good evening. Uh, the change order is a, is a direct response to, as we were doing work there, uh, they found that the, uh, the original file law needed to be upgraded and actually, uh, to be, uh, renovated in order to meet the, uh, specs of the current, uh, per permitting responsibilities. So therefore, we had to, once the project was started, uh, we had to, um, change out the entire file law based on, uh, DPI regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the budget?
Board Member, Board Member Queen has her hand raised.
Board Member Queen?
That's right. I'll keep y'all here all night. Yes, so Dr. Fossett, I have a question for you and answer, um, Madam CEO. When we had change orders like this, um, even as a board, so not only we would know, but so that the community will know. I know they hear us say that they have changed, but is it a way that when something has been changed, just like you just explained that, that a explanation can be given? So community members won't be questioning, why are you guys spending so much money? Where is it going to? That maybe a, a simple point or explanation, just like you gave just now, can be explained with each change order as it's been read?
Yeah, we would be willing to do, uh, you know, whatever, um, the board would like us to do in terms of change orders. As you know, we never know, you know, based on what the situation is, what will happen. What we do know currently is that, um, a lot of times when we're doing renovations, so as, as this is Stephen Cade, we're adding in addition, there's sometimes, uh, based on the, um, the, the level of work that we're doing, that it requires us to change, um, things within the whole school. So sometimes those things are unforeseen. We're actually getting a better gauge now on, uh, what the requirements are in terms of as we do, um, small, small, um, projects, that sometimes they affect, uh, larger parts of the existing school that we have to change in order to meet regulations. So, um, I think currently, right now, that, uh, you know, change orders, and I see Doc raising their hand, uh, currently, right now, uh, you know, when we do report our change orders monthly, uh, to the board as a reporting process, uh, in terms of, um, uh, a list that we give.
In terms of this board action summary, it's listed as the second section in the very first paragraph, but we can always provide more detail.
Thank you so very much. I was actually, I mean, I saw what it was, but a lot of times the public deceit invites, and I know we assume that everybody have internet and everybody is able to get up and pull things up on board doc, but let's be realistic, people aren't. So sometimes people are hearing things, and for us to be more clarity, and as we, as I always say, we have to be diverse, and we have to reach the people who don't know, who cannot see. And some things we just need to say it out. So thank you for taking the time to explain that. So the people who are not able to go on board doc, so who do not, who are not able to see why the change order was done, it's good for us just to say it out loud before they can hear it and they can know. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we can move, uh, for the vote. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? The motion carries, uh, to, uh, approve the budget consent agenda. Next, we will move into the non-consent agenda, and there doesn't appear to be any items listed there. So we'll move on to 8.0 Unfinished Business, and this is the second reader. Board Member Williams has requested that we consider items 8.9, the 2021 through 2022 school calendar separately. Are there any other items that need to be addressed separately? If not, then we'll move on. Dr. Golson, please introduce items 8.1 through 8.8.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Items 8.1 through 8.8 requires board approval of a resolution for Advanced Placement Human Geography, Advanced Placement United States History, and Advanced Placement Statistics 2021, a resolution for Business Education, Introduction to Marketing 2021, a resolution for Career and Technical Education, Family and Consumer Science, Fashion Design and Interior Design 2021, a resolution for ESOL English Newcomer, ESOL English Beginner and ESOL English Intermediate 2021, a resolution for Immersion Programs, Chinese Language Arts Grade 7, Spanish Dual Language Grades K through 5 and Spanish Language Arts Grade 7 2021, a resolution for Science 6, 7, and 8th Grade, Anatomy and Physiology, Chemistry, Earth and Space Science, and Physics for 2021, a resolution for STEM Courses, Engineering Foundations, Electronic Systems and Architecture, Graphics 2021, a resolution for World Languages, Introduction to Italian and Translation 2021, and that concludes 1, 8.1 through 8.8.
May I have a motion to approve items 1, 8.1 through 8.8 on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve 8.1 through 8.8 on the agenda.
Okay.
It has been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no, none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is I, item 8.9, the 2021, 2022 Prince George County Public Schools Calendar. Dr. Golson, please introduce item 8.8.
Yes, this is item actually 8.9 requires board approval of, of the 2021, 2022 Prince George County Public School Calendar.
Board Member Williams, you wanted to comment on this item?
Yes, um, I believe the CEO is recommending, uh, a calendar B for approval. And, um, I just had a question about September 7th, which is after Labor Day when school will be starting. That is actually Rosh Hashanah, and so I was wondering if, um, I believe we need to move it one, one day to September 8th.
I, I, I accept that finally amendment. We just would have to extend the school year by one day.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, I would like to make that motion to move the first day of school from September 7th to September 8th, so that we can recognize Rosh Hashanah.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I want to second it, but I don't want to extend the school year. I want to take one of them teachers days off.
I can.
Okay, we, it has been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Board Member Queen?
Yes, so, yes, um, so I'm, you know, I definitely think we should definitely move that date back, and I, you know, was going to mention that, but I still say that we need to take some of them that days off as for, um, the teachers. Actually, I don't know how you can get in there, get in on a Saturday. I just don't think it's like that. We still should have so many days that's on you. But I do want to com- comment to say that you guys did a great job as I read over both of the calendars. Um, the, I seen the report that you sent out, and it was very thorough with the information that you had that came back from the community and the parents, and the information that came back from the staff. So I do want to commend Dr. Golson, you and staff, that, that was very great. It was good to see that report. Um, I just, I just, I don't know how school got so long from when I was in school. We never went in school that long. We started after Labor Day, and we were out before the 7th and 10th. And it's, I know it's probably, and I do, it's probably all the dates that the state are adding on, but it's taken so many days away from the kids in the summer. So I was just trying to get the days down, but again, I do thank you for doing the best that you can, as always. Thank you.
Board Member Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Um, I, I appreciate the intent behind that amendment. Uh, I did want to note Rosh Hashanah is two days, and so what has been communicated by, um, advocates has been concerned, uh, advocates for the Jewish community has been concerned around, um, the first and second day of school not being able to, um, to attend the first couple of days of school. And so I'm inclined to, to look at option A. Um, I did also want to note that the survey, um, uh, didn't note that Rosh Hashanah lied on the first two days, or option B had Rosh Hashan- option B had started on the first two days of, uh, this major Jewish holiday. And I feel like if that was included, then maybe we would have gotten different results. So I just think we should be more mindful of that in the future. But I'm inclined to support option A because I don't know that this will necessarily satisfy the concerns, um, that were noted.
Uh, Dr. Golson?
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity to speak to Rabbi, um, Foxman, who we talked extensively around the Rosh Hashanah holiday. And first he said, um, it's, he appreciated that the school board would, would give their employee, Jewish employees Yon Kippur off, um, while both holidays are extremely important to their faith. That one is, um, of more, um, importance, but their issue was around Rosh Hashanah starting on the first day, not for both days. Um, so I had the opportunity to speak to him, fully understood the concern, and that was why I accepted the recommendation of Board Member Williams.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, uh, and that we approve option B.
With amendment, aye.
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 Any oppose?
No.
Who said no?
Ms. Board Member Ahmed.
Thank you. One note, the roll call. Ms. L, uh, Ms. King, who's going to do the roll call?
I am.
Okay.
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
No.
Ms. Mrs. Ahmed?
No.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
I abstained.
Thank you. Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris? Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray? Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Seven yeses, two noes, one abstention, and three absence.
So does that motion carry? Do we need eight votes for that? Yes, we did.
I, I can speak if Mr. Thomas does not. Go ahead. Counselor Thomas does carry.
Thank you. How many votes did it have in favor? Was it seven or was it eight?
It was seven.
Okay, so the student board member's vote would count unless you all find that this involves, uh, school closing, reopening or boundary, which I don't believe it does. So you need, you, you need eight to pass because her vote should count.
Is it a matter that it was presented by the CEO, Mr. Thomas?
But you presented it for the Board's approval, correct? Oh, I'm sorry. If, if, uh, this is your recommendation, Doctor, um,
Yes, it is.
To the Board. Okay, so it, it would take two-thirds vote to overturn the recommendation of the CEO. Thank you for clarifying.
So the motion carries, am I correct?
It would.
Okay.
Well, the.
Point of order, I, I.
Two people are talking. Please.
It's a point of order, um, point of order. I, I don't think that this means that the motion passes. I just think that it.
It means that the superintendent's recommendation, uh, it, 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 uh, remains.
Yeah, but the motion does not pass.
Right.
I was going to say the same thing. It's just the director, CEO recommendation has been upheld. It was voted down, so. But it, but she did accept the recommendation from, uh, Board Member Williams. So that was a, that was a part of the, uh, amended recommendation of the CEO to the Board, which has been upheld.
So that means Dr. Golson's recommendation stands, am I correct?
Correct.
It's been upheld, yep.
Okay.
So that we can make sure the minutes are accurate, um, uh, Board Chair, is it that the CEO's recommendation stands to approve calendar, excuse me, option B? Or is it that it's option B with the amendment, um, given that she accepted as a friendly amendment? I sort of make sure the record is accurate.
What was the friendly amendment? I thought we were voting.
The friendly amendment was made by Ms. Queen, correct?
Ms. Williams to move the date.
Or Ms. Williams, rather.
Board Member Williams.
And the CEO indicated that she wouldn't object to that.
So I'm, let, let's be clear for the record then. Does that mean that option B has been approved or the CEO's original recommendation?
That means option B was approved with the friendly amendment, which the CEO accepted. Is, is that correct, Dr. Golson? You did accept the friendly amendment, correct?
That is accurate.
But I think their terminology is not approved, it's upheld. We didn't approve it, it was upheld.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member Valentine. Okay, so, if, if any other, uh, items to be considered separately, uh, need motion, second discussion, uh, move on. Um, follow-up items. Follow-up items will be posted upon receipt. Uh, motions to approve actions in the, uh, executive session.
A point of order, Madam Chair, if we could, the point of order does, the point of order means I can interrupt because it's a matter of rules. Um, if we can go into, at this point in time, we can go back into executive session and then come back.
Say that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Miller.
I'm just reading my script first. I have to let the general public know that we did not complete all the business in the executive session, and we have agreed as a board to reconvene into, uh, the executive session to complete the order of business. And I need a motion for us to reconvene the executive session.
So moved.
It's been moved in second that we reconvene into executive session. Um, Mr. Martin has set up a link for us. The public can give us a few minutes, um, to reconvene back into the, uh, general meeting so that we can deal with the motion to approve actions, uh, in today's executive session.
Bye.
Well, see you in a few minutes.
See you in the executive session.
Yes.